A minute, we're gonna do a quick test, audio test of the new microphones. Is that helping? Did you hear us, Mike?
Take a sec for it to come to YouTube unfortunately.
Is the microphone's working?
My. Our work.
Would you mind saying something? Would you mind saying something? Yes, you know, just so we can test the mic.
It's um, yeah, that mic's gonna have to be. Standing, oh.
Well, the one.
Yeah.
You stand there.
Oh, you do.
Hey, hey, check one two. Your little stand up. Yeah, I, I, I don't. Come on, I'm sure.
What's due about?
You might get that later. How was it?
That's a good sign. Yeah, nice work.
Thank you. Thank you. There we go. So we'd like to welcome everyone. To the Hartford Board of School Directors. January eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. Happy New Year, everyone. As we come to order, are there any changes, additions, and the approval of the agenda?
Hearing nothing, please we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Uh.
I opposed. So. Our, our first order of business. Tonight is to hear from our Hartford School District instructional coaches. And they will be offering the community a presentation. And you have the floor.
Actually, I have the slides that we can be able to see, so however that process for you all to be able to access.
All right, well, thank you. Is that okay, Mike? Projecting, okay. Um, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We are representatives from the Hartford School District Coaching Cohort and Program, our district program. I'm Julie Robinson. I am the coordinator of the coaching program. I'm glad some of our other coaches introduce themselves and the buildings. Focus areas that they are representing.
Hi, I'm Nicole Wannett. I work at the middle school as an instructional coach and interventionist. I've been here, this is my nineteenth year in the district.
Ryan Thomas, I'm an instructional coach at the Adakwichi School.
My name is Rachel Glenn. I'm an instructional coach and interventionist at the.
In Grand Central, Way River School, I'm currently an interventionist and I encourage teachers to help math. So we're here to share a little bit about the goals and mission and work of our district coaching program. Some of the things that we do and the frameworks that guide us and the impact that we have across the district. So we're gonna start with just asking you to think a little bit. Think about a time when you received coaching of any kind. And so we're just gonna ask you to take, you know, maybe thirty seconds to think about what it was like. How that coaching experience impacted you. What would you have wanted out of coaching and what would you want it to look like? Uh, for you today. And so any kind of coaching in any aspect of your life. So I'll just give you a few seconds of.
So just take a look at this image for a minute. I'm sure you've all been here in a place in your life or within your community or within the school where you felt like we're all working really hard, but perhaps not in the same directions. Um, and so. One thing that I felt as being part of our cohort as coaches is because we come together on a regular basis. From all the school districts, we have the ability to kind of check in on. Our flow and, and see how we're doing and try to avoid feelings like you see in the stuff. So just a quick image. To uh, capture as we move forward. So yeah, next slide. Um. So. This is just a quick flow chart to think about. How we see coaching, instructional coaching in our district and the impact it has at the district level, at the school-based level. Um, the teacher impact and most importantly, the student fact. And how they all flow together. I'm just gonna touch base on a couple of the bullet points in each of. Um, these sections. So. I had just mentioned, but at the district level, we've now been meeting monthly as a cohort. For the past five years. Um, and that's really allowed us to have cohesion. Um, I've gotten a chance to. Get to know the other coaches and other schools, so that allows me to reach out to them, um, to keep that community amongst ourselves, to not feel like these isolated buildings within our district. But to have a feeling that we're all together. So I really enjoyed that component of it. Um. We have created what we call our district data meeting protocols. Um, as coaches, and that has led us to having frequent data meetings with our teachers, with our teams in our schools. And coming back together and talking about how are those working and how do we need to improve on that process? But in my many years in this district, it feels really good to know that we're head, we're talking about data in a way that's meaningful. And consistent across the district. Um, and so that process I've been a part of as coach, that's been wonderful. Um. I, we do a lot of onboarding, especially with new teachers coming into our district. Especially new teachers not coming in with programs or with the backgrounds that they need in order to be ready on day one. Um, and so we're really able as a coach who doesn't have a classroom to partner with those teachers and make them feel successful and retain teachers. Um, as we, as they enter our district. Um, and the more we do this, the more opportunities students have to excel. Um, hopefully that feeling of belonging increases and our student achievement increases as well.
So. Reason kind of we're here today presenting is because the last three or four years, we've been really working hard to determine what does. Effective coaching look like in the Hartford School District. So we've been doing a lot of research. We've been. Uh, going to a lot of professional developments, working with other districts and seeing their models to figure out what is the best way that we can support teachers to support students in their success. So we've. Come to a point where we feel like we are ready to kind of present all of this out to everyone and let everyone know in Hartford like, hey, this is what our goal is, is our mission statement. This is what we. It'll look like at Hartford. So our mission statement, I am just gonna read it, uh, is the Hartford School District is committed to improving curriculum design. Instructional practices and use of assessments to support the effective implementation of our multi-tiered system of support. To accomplish this goal, we have dedicated, a dedicated team of educators provide instructional coaching and job embedded professional development to our teaching staff throughout the district. So. Some of what we do as an instructional coach is, one, we work with all educators. It's not just teach classroom teachers, all educators across the district. Now, lady, we work with individual teachers in a partnership, but we also support team teaching. Uh, our work is confidential, not evaluative. And optional for teachers. Uh, it is usually personalized and is really led by the teachers themselves. We guide. Then with their knowledge, their practice, their. Cost and support of their students, and we're there to kind of help them through. What are some high leverage practices we could support you with, or here are some new ideas, or if we're looking at coaching new plays to try for your playbook. To try to figure out what's the best route to take for everyone to be successful.
Turns out what else can coaches do? So, uh, that's a large part of our work. But in addition to coaching, we also can run workshops or in-service sessions. I know this, uh, coming Tuesday or early release day. I'm gonna be working with my staff on some writing revolution materials, working with staff on how you get kids writing across all content areas, for example. Uh, universal instructional strategies, equity sort of trauma from strategies, there's some lesson study, curriculum topic study. Getting learning menus, project replace based learning, using data to inform decision making. A lot of that can even come from those data meetings we have. A team realizes, well, gosh, that data we looked at was really useful, but great, let's do something with that then. It's not data isolation. It's, we use that data to inform our instruction. Um, and creating efficiency-based scales and assessments. Often we get really great assessments that we'll look at and say, well, how are we gonna figure out what kids know? That's a really cool lab, but what? What does proficient mean on that lab? So being able to look at that with teachers and figure that out together. So again, it's coaching partnership with teachers. Is a really big part of what we do because we are not the experts in the room. We are there alongside the teachers. Um, the goal is that the teacher and the coach is working in that partnership. It's always a means of this. Always efficiency-based in our learning. Um, the research does say that coaching, instructional coaching builds teacher capacity, content knowledge and wellbeing. Enhances instructional practice and personal relationships, not only between educators themselves, but also between educators and students. Uh, it will increase student outcomes, both academic and social emotional. Uh, yes, teacher retention, and then I'm gonna jump back to one of the increased same student outcomes, because I know especially at the middle school this year, we're really focused on that sense of belonging. And it always comes back to the student. It's always about what can we do to help students? School is always about students. It's not about the teacher. How are we helping make sure that students feel like they belong? How would we make sure that students are getting what they need from school? And research shows that having an instructional coach working with a teacher. Provides that success for students. So. That's all with coaching and power. It's helping students succeed at the end of the day and feel like they succeed. So it doesn't matter if the student is succeeding. If they don't feel like they're succeeding. We still have a rich circle. We have to do both of those pieces at the same time.
So as you've heard already, our instructional coaches, um, work together and collaborate a lot on their own practice, their own coaching practice and their own professional development around what it needs to be an effective instructional coach. And so, um, as you've heard, we gather monthly, um, uh, at least to engage in collaborative, uh, book reads, professional development, webinars. Um, lots of different things that have allowed our coaches to continuously improve and grow and, um, transform their own coaching practice. Last year, a group of our coaches, um, did a year-long course in Burlington. Um, this year, we are actually currently in a webinar on, um. Uh, data systems and coaching. Um, so there's a lot that our coaches do together to really continuously build their expertise. Um, but I just, we wanted to share with you a few of the, uh, book studies that we've been engaged with over the years as well. So these are some of the really, um. You know, the, the main names that you'll see in terms of instructional coaching frameworks. So Elena Aguilar, Coaching for Equity. So we've done a lot of work on what it means to coach for equity and how we enhance equity for our students when, like, through the coaching practice and through transforming, uh. Those, uh, instructional practices across, uh, classrooms and instructional settings. Uh, the impact cycle Jim Knight really, um, looks at those partnerships and coaching cycles and, um, what that, uh, how that process can really, um. Create that partnership model to enhance teacher, um, practice and student outcomes through identifying an area that, um. The, you know, the teacher has identified to focus on, setting a goal, um, as you've heard already, uh, creating, uh, strategies or checklists or ways of maybe approaching that. That current reality that the teacher's working on and then finding ways to sort of progress and move forward through that and then continuously assessing. Students that are coaching, uh, Diane Sweeney is really looking at that student data piece and using that as a, as a starting point for in, um, for, for transforming practice. And then street data, um, is a, what we're currently reading, and that's really looking at how we bring student voice and, um. A, the breadth of data into the coaching practice. So not just looking at, for example, um, you know, numbers and assessment, um. Results, but also hearing students' voices, hearing focus groups, hearing from the community, hearing from parents, things like that as a way to really, um, inform, um. Teacher practice, educational outcomes and, um, the experience that we're providing. So just a lot of the different ways that coaches are continuously working together on honing. And growing their practice continuously together. And we'll just, uh, wanted to share this, uh, this quote from Elena Aguilar, coaching is a vehicle. Um, and there's a little bit more on the bottom. There we go. Uh, through which we can reflect on our practice, understand ourselves better, surface and shift our beliefs and build new habits to disrupt inequities. So as, you know, as we improve together collaboratively in partnership, the practices that are happening, um, across classrooms and educational settings, we are creating greater equity for our students through that process.
So one example of something that we did last year as a district coaching, um, cohort is. Kind of going back to the, um, image of the boat. People. Rowing the wrong direction. One way we kind of are getting ourselves all rowing in the right direction is. Through learning walks. So learning walks, the ideas will go and they go into different classes. And they watch, not in a value of way, but to just learn from their peers, learn from experts that are in the schools. And so we were fortunate enough to, as a. Coaching cohort, but at every single school in this district, we went pre-K through twelve, we got to get into. I don't know how many classes we got to get into, but we got to look at so many different teaching styles, so many different high-level practices being used in different ways. And we were able to then come together and talk about what are we seeing, what is aligning pre-K through twelve? What is already in place that can, we can celebrate? What are our next steps? What do we wanna look at further? And it was just a really great experience to get us involved in that constant communication of how are we gonna get. Free elementary schools, the middle school and high school, all kind of flowing in that one direction.
We like to get our own street data to find out from our teachers what learning walks are like, because we wanna know, are they working? Are they a tool that we should continue using? Uh, so we have a teacher who submitted, um, just some information about what. They experienced when they went on learning walks. And what they said is that learning walks are an awesome way to take a step outside of your room and think about a problem of practice. By learning from many other experts in our school. I like to go in with a question in mind, like what routine and structures are working in other spaces? And how can I use them in my own room to help all students learn? I usually bring a notebook and jot down anything I see that makes me say, aha. I've taken learning walks on team, cross-team, and even at an elementary school. All of them have given me lightbulb moments about both large and small moves I can make to better support students. I always walk away with tons of new things to share and try.
I just wanna add on in terms of the learning logs, um, coaches in the buildings are the ones that teachers refer to and say, hey, I really wanna get out and learn about this. And that's a part of our role is to organize that and, um. Knowing each other across all the building things, we can. Provide those learning logs outside of our own building, which has been wonderful. Um, here are a few other teacher quotes, um. From. Various people. I'm not gonna read them all, because there's a lot there, but I'm just gonna pull out a few words. Um. It's a way to process questions. Um, in a non-evaluative manner. Push our thinking in a metacognitive way. To try something new. To support new teachers. Resulting in greater outcomes. Coordinating professional development for staff. Based on needs. Helping with curriculum work. Engaging curriculum, deeper conversations. It has improved student outcomes overall. Confidence and instruction has increased. So those are just a few words I wanna pull out. And this is mine, um, to end this with. When we were working with Ella Dorsey, who we took the course with and is, um, a major person in the state of Vermont, helping to promote coaching. Um, we had to write our own. And so last year I wrote this. I'm gonna tend with it, um, before I read it though, just we will also be handing out our coaching flyer, um, and it's linked on the slides as well. I coach so that all students are supported and challenged in order to reach their full potential. I coach to partner with teachers. To create an environment that allows for productive struggle. Reflection, collaboration, growth. I coach so that students feel the valuable part of their education. And I coach because I love our students. And I coach because I love our students, want them to love themselves. Believe in themselves and learn to be brave. Thank you for having us today.
Very quickly, we'll say that these two documents that we're handing out, one is. Our full coaching description that not only is information for the district and what coaches do. But also was a really informative process for us to go through to craft that and really identify. Who we are and what we do. And then the other one is sort of a one pager that kind of gives the highlights, sort of more of a flyer as opposed to the in-depth description.
Thank you.
So before you disappear, I have to ask. The. Picture of the. What is called a conqueror coach? Or is that a deliberate visual pun?
I have to ask you about the system here. Audio is great. The slides came in. The video stopped working for the owl and I can try unplugging it and re-plugging it in. And that could work. So we have everything except the owl video right now.
Let's try to get it working.
Yes, let's try to get it working.
We'll take over.
Okay.
One hour. Thanks. Thank you again.
No, thank you guys.
It's usually the best of both. We brought a brand new, super fancy. Four color laser printer. And it has a sleep cycle problem where it goes to sleep and I haven't figured out how to. Keep it from doing that until I'm constantly turning it on and turning it off. The only way to get it to work.
Printers are the bane of my existence.
We're going to find the picture. While we're waiting. Couple of years ago, my family went to Washington DC. And in the. Big room in the cultural museum. They have.
Scott to the rescue.
Baby stored. Which everybody thinks of as the coaches that were in veterans for.
I mean, I. That's right.
And. Coaches that they had, they were fully restored. And they're called. But the one that was restored there. And he got close to it to look at the writing on it. Was one that had run from White River Junction to Stockton. Yep.
They never recovered it, I guess.
According to my grandmother, who may or may not have been correct. The portion of the road. That went by place they hadn't offered. It's part of the Kings Island. I don't picture the coach right there, but the sign. Being White River Junction, which stock for up.
That's awesome. Oh, there's some cool history around. Whenever I see a sign that says like what a town is founded, I actually think about.
So this was in Washington DC. Post office museum.
Is your daughter on the track team? That's who I read about in the paper. Okay, I was like, oh, that must be it. Are these handouts? Will they be uploaded to the.
As I say, I uploaded the PowerPoint and there's.
Now may not be the time, but for next time, could you use OBS, like open broadcast software? See if, see if that might work. To grab that and then run all the audio feeds through that.
Yeah, it's maybe. Slow down and it stopped. Again, that is. For sure way.
Yeah. Oh, questions. Is the audio sufficient? For people who are trying to log in remotely to access.
Is there? I mean, is there anything? Audio and video?
Yeah. So basically if you said you can attend via. Video or whatever.
It's also thinking, I could join. With another computer pointed at you. Or anybody could use their computer if they're also in the. Zoom session to point from a chair at the board. One option. Not like this doesn't show up.
Is there anything timely that can't wait for next week? Cause you have a meeting announced next Wednesday.
It's a screen share. Slides, documents could be just.
Said it was.
Of course, are we in between every cause?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we've got the, the camera has died. We're trying to figure out whether we can resurrect it. And if we can't, if we're allowed to go forward, the audio evidently is working. But under the new open meeting law. We're not sure whether we can go forward without the camera as well. Trying to see if I can get in.
Yeah, I'm trying to. If I, if I log in myself as a panelist and I pin myself with a separate computer, that'll feed. But it'll just be a computer pointed from the audience that you point towards.
I could try to do it by, by phone.
And it just asks, are you logged in? So that's not, yeah, okay.
You know, you can get in anywhere if you carry a ladder. I mean, we can still show slides and documents, those types of things, but it's just the video. Could we also just ask anybody here and online if they have the objections? So continue. If we don't have anyone. I have, I have a bunch.
This is going to sound bad. You don't have a specific like reference? I don't write very much important. Did you? Yeah, yeah, there's certain kinds, like, yes. It's definitely my.
I think we have pilot plans.
To you. Well, this, this one, this one's a pretty good one.
It's the same, yes.
Give it a whirl. I like the color, yeah, nice, yeah, it's smooth, like woodchow. There's a, like a specialty. These really. So here's the thing. So this has been years in the making, I should just get it for yourself. More than a cure. That's right. I'm, I'm old, I can't take high test afternoon. I don't stretch it with a diet coke.
My told you in the morning does the trail.
Jacob's a cold through that, I could do that.
More caffeine, one cup of coffee, and I just, it's very effective. Because it brews slower, so it gets more flavor.
Interesting. Well, I guess that makes sense with the temperature, right? This is technology. That's right.
Did you turn your video off?
I don't know, those are new, but I haven't seen.
Working? It was, and now, I mean, that's what we're seeing now, so did it? Somehow? It might swipe, swiped off a bit or something. Asking you again to start. Okay. Say if you could, if you could get it like.
Don't you, don't you want the board so you can see the slides, right? I'm gonna put my mittens on, so you got a better view.
Oh, this is, keeps on trying to reorganize into. Into. Portrait rather than landscape.
Yeah, like, um. If you really want to. Get everyone in, um, that whole table can come up like three deep.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right.
At school board meetings since twenty twenty five.
We have audio. We will resume our discussion. Uh, at the. Electronic sign. Electronic sign. Comments.
The electronic sign, you have the comments.
I, I don't have the contract with me. Our current sign has been dead apparently for some time. And I knew before that it was working. Went off, came back on again. What we discovered, as much as like, it's fact. A group of people about ten or twelve years ago donated the money to purchase the sign. With the athletic department. Obviously, we, it's here, was here. And served well. And apparently, from what I hear from Jonathan, there is an issue with the wiring between the high school. And where the current sign sits. What I had talked to Kevin about. The electronic sign that's down at the town hall is very nice, very impressive. And we should have something like up at the high school. That tells that everybody, when the school board is meeting. Things that are going on, plays, whatever. So I, I talked to the company that we use to get the sign at the town hall. And. They had apparently sculpted a cell before. So I ended up with a quote. Uh, it was twenty thousand dollars and some change. Talking with Jonathan. That twenty thousand sounded nice, but apparently it will be expensive to. Pick up the. From somewhere, the high school on down towards the road. Personally, I'd like to find out exactly what that's going to cost. Because I think the sign. Is important. I can tell you for myself. When my kids were in school, I used to drive by and always look to see what. So called was going on. Today, when everybody's concerned about one of the board meeting. Different things that are happening to the school district. And nobody knows, well, if we had assigned that role to like the one that's at the town hall. I think we would accomplish. It's not the only way, but it's certainly one way it would work. So I, I just. I would like to pursue it. One of the other questions was the Department of Athletics control design. The, the previous one. I believe that when we, if we're successful and we can put the sign in, it should be supervised. By the superintendent's office. Therefore, it's fair, it's available for anybody. To make a request and then the superintendent's office can decide whether it's appropriate. But I think we need to have a consensus that it's not just my, my feelings. But other people feel it's just as important inside.
I mean, I think if we have it and it's not working, it's not a good look for us that it's not working, so we should figure out the way that we can get it repaired. I don't know if we can look at any local businesses that might want to help sponsor the repair and maybe. Have their logo on the sign to show support. Maybe we could, we could find a local sponsor.
So. I'm a little unclear on how much investigation has been done as to the costs of repairing it. If.
Well, they tell, what they tell me, it's non, the sign itself is non-repairable.
Right, so we would have to replace it.
The signs got to be replaced.
Okay.
Then that's the other piece.
Yes, so the question is, would it be possible if they, if they were bright enough to have run conduit all the way to the side? Putting in a new cable could be relatively easy, assuming the conduit is not damaged in some way. If they just buried a wire. Not surprised we have a problem and it would be expensive because we would have to get it under various levels of asphalt. Which would either get one of the entrenching tools and you then backfill the asphalt once you're done, or you. Get one of those. Devices that will go underneath the, the road.
If we can find the original contract, yeah, just, I'm assuming that there's a plan or a schematic to show.
Well, we probably. Yeah, what they did, it'd be worth investigating. And then based on what we learn. Uh, we could then make a decision, but it certainly would be worth investigating further. On my thoughts.
How do you feel, Katie?
I, I guess I'd need to know more, like you're all saying about like what the cost would be. I think it's an interesting idea to think if there's like. Someone who'd be willing to sponsor its repair. I think that's an interesting thought. I also wonder, I guess, like. You know, to your point, Doug, you know, how many people are accessing that information in that way? And is that, you know, is that, is that a useful way in addition to, as you were referring to, like other ways of communicating? You know, is that a part of, of everything we should be doing? I, I, I do wonder about like community input into, into use of it as well.
Only one of the, the question was, I know the conduit comes from the high school at the moment. But from where the sign sits, would it not make more sense to have the, whatever power or whatever come from the superintendent's? Office. It is closer, certainly closer. But I, I just. Just needed consensus so that we can say to Jonathan. We did not, not questions of whatever facts. What is it actually that's broken? What is it actually going to cost to repair it? Versus in the car, oh, we know the cost of the sign, but I, I'm questioning whether it would be cheap. If we're going to tear everything up from the high school. I think it would be cheaper. If we went from the sign to the superintendent's office.
So we need to find out what the true cost of the, the whole project would be, like, before deciding if it's worth it. It's hearing from the community to see.
What interests us. Yeah, I. I understand the appeal of the sign, and it has certainly been an object of a certain amount of passion at some points. With the members in school board. But. We're choosing between a sign and another instructional person. That becomes a difficult conversation, and so it's. Cost becomes a real issue, so I, I would definitely be interested in finding out what the cost would be.
And finding out that there's a group.
Yeah, there may, there may well be somebody who, I mean, if that's the way we got it the first time, it indicates that there's a chance of doing that again.
Even, even a portion. You know, it might be a collaborative for folks, because when we installed it back originally. Either the booster club. You know, or a combination of booster club and. One of the classes, alumni classes, you know, that came up with the plumbing. And they provided out the whole sign. And actually did the labor. Supervised by Jonathan's predecessor in the installation. You know, one of the questions that Doug brought up is that if we. Are having the same company look at it. You know, what? What is the update cost versus using, you know, existing, you know, infrastructure? You know, because there's a pretty solid. Concrete base footing that was for, for that, for that sign. You know, so things of that sort, you know, coming up with that cost, I think makes sense, and then the other, the other thing is those. You know, those potential sponsoring entities, you know, maybe another class might be interested as well as, you know, the booster club again. You know, possibly, you know, like, you know, Doug and Garrett were saying, you know, a community sponsor. We've done it for other pieces of equipment, you know, in the district. So. Uh, I, I guess. We can, we'll continue the discussion, we'll bring back some more data, you know, if you want to.
How can we just officially ask Katie to speak to Jonathan and add them? Definitely that facts, not just a question.
You know, the questions is. Because we won't let that one go. Budget updates and information.
Um, so in your packets tonight, I have the nice little summary page that just has the summary of all, you know, the big increase stuff. You know, we got about one point seven million going to selling and benefits, another one point seven going to the bond. Uh, we got about fifty thousand going to contract services. We got about sixteen going to the Butler Bus Transportation Contract Increase, and then we had about three hundred and sixty thousand going to. Special education tuition increases. So overall, right now, we're at about three point nine million dollar increase for the general fund. The next two pages in your packets is just the function breakout, so you can see, you know, where. The next two pages in your packets is just the function breakout, um, so you can see, you know, what the increases, decreases are. By function and then just, um, the objects of where those increases are. And I know everyone's asking the question, well, let's talk turkey. What does this actually do to my tax rates? Um, presently with a nine hundred thousand dollar buy down. We're at nine point eight percent on the property tax homestead. Um, and then the income is, uh, eight point one percent decrease. Um, and this is based on the long-term weighted average that we have. Um, presently, we're at version three point O. Um, there's been some work with the state's data team to get, um, some discrepancies corrected. So we're waiting on the final four point O because we've resubmitted files. Um, I'm told that should be. Coming along in the next couple of days, hopefully. We received our CLA letter, you know, end of December. Um, that basically said your state adjusted CLA is gonna be seventy seven point three four percent. Um, I've checked in and had a lot of conversations with the Department of Taxes because I'm saying, you know, hey, we did the reappraisal here. What's going on? Um, and they basically said like, no, you should be closer to on our bottom of a hundred. By the time tax bills go out. So whatever we pass now is not actually gonna be what hits tax bills. So keep that in mind. And we'll get into that a little bit more. Um, and then the yields are what they are. Um, obviously, you know, the homestead yield went down and the other two yields went up at this point. Um, the legislative session hasn't gotten too deep into it. And obviously, you know, those yields are going to. Increase, decrease, depending on the feedback that they get from the field being, you know, the business administrators or whatever one's doing with their budgets. Um, so overall, right now, um, you know, nine point eight and. Eight point one percent decrease is where we're at with a nine fifty thousand dollar buy down. Now, if we're talking about, you know, a realistic, you know, hundred percent CLA, I'm not gonna go above that, but. It could very well be above that with the, you know, state adjusted CLA. But I said, well, just playing with the numbers here, if we have a hundred percent CLA. Um, we're looking at a twelve point eight percent decrease on the homestead and a five point five percent decrease. On the income based. And, um, I also ran those numbers against the calculator because keep in mind, we passed our bond in March. So. That bond is not included in the, um. The ad spending, so it gets deducted out. So we get a nice little discount from that. So our actual like cost per pupil is going to be less than what's on the sheet. Um, and both of those numbers were below the excess spending threshold. So we're okay there. That's just the update as far as we're at presently today.
Any chance we will get further updates in time to make a difference to our decisions?
Uh, absolutely. I mean, we have, um, VASBO, which is the Vermont Association of School Business Officials meeting on Friday. And, um, there's definitely going to be some updates from the field then. Um, I don't know that it's gonna move the numbers all that much from what we're talking about. So I think we're gonna have to make some kind of. Have decisions and have some discussions about how much risk we're willing to take on. For what we, you know, pass and print on the sheets versus what actually goes out on taxes.
In one of the questions that came up at the last meeting, uh, from the community member. You know, was trying to separate. The discussion from. What the state's gonna do, what reevaluation is gonna do to. The question. That picture of a graduate, you know, what is our expectation, you know, for the district? You know, what do we need to? Address. All of the items that we need to address. In a reasonable way. To continue to try to grow the fish. And, and you know, that was the question, I think, that, uh, you know, one of our community members did, you know, bring up, you know, last week. You know, what's that, that number? And looking at that, you know, as well, um. And I, I guess. When we look, when we look at that. The nine point, um, number. Gets us close to that resolution. To that question that he brought up, you know, at the last meeting. So now, now we're faced with. All of those other pieces that he wanted us to set aside, you know, which is. We don't know, you know, what other inputs are going to come into play. Between the time we pass the budget. And the end of the session. Because that's when it's determined truly what the tax rate's gonna take. And we, we've had that happen before where we've settled on, you know, for an example. Uh, let's say seven, seven percent. If, uh, of the yields that came through, adjustments to the ed fund. We ended up in a situation as a district where our rate, you know, dropped from that seven to three percent. You know, so, you know, and, and, and that's a heck of a way to run. An organization, but you know, I think that's why he posed the question. What we need to do is more is determine, you know, what do we feel, you know, is that. Of that number. That kind of achieves that, that, that middle ground. You know, because it's, it's highly probable with what's going on right, right this minute. With education in Vermont, then there are going to be some changes. That's gonna affect this word.
I mean, I, I still like to start at what our ideal budget would be and then work our way from there. You know, like you just said, what do we need to, what do we need to provide the best education possible for all the students? And then we can work on it from there. Instead of trying to guess what the tax rates are gonna be and, and hold for the best.
You know, I, I think that's what. Generally is getting at in the last meeting. Was exactly, exactly that, because you know, nobody, nobody has a crystal ball.
So. We have the budget numbers broken down by areas, expense and so forth. Uh, which just tells us the budget number story. It doesn't tell us anything about what the proposed numbers that we have in front of us mean in terms of. Positions that are unfilled, uh, potential layoffs of the people, anything like that. Uh, since, uh, slightly over seventy percent of the cost is. People and basically benefits. Um, what is the story with the current budget in terms of? We are leaving positions unfilled, uh, we're not. We're reducing staffing in each situation at all. My assumption is, but I haven't heard it stated, is that. We're probably not filling some positions, but then we're not all, at the same time, we're not letting anybody go who's currently an employee. So this is a status quo budget, which because you're not filling. Justified needed positions is going to hurt someone. Is that correct statement?
Yeah, I would say that's accurate. I mean, I think last year. You know, we, we did not fill a number of unfilled positions. And I think this year we're in a place where, you know, there are some unfilled positions. That we're not going to fill, um, but any movement beyond what we're talking about tonight would, would mean a reduction in staff.
Right.
Um, so this is in essence, you know, maintenance, this is in essence, status quo, this is in essence of a level fund budget.
Right. And of the remaining. Twenty-eight percent or so of the budget. Uh, there are several items in there in fact, which we have no discretion.
Yep.
So we're gonna have to pay for snow removal. We're gonna have to pay for principal on the bonds that we have accumulated. We're going to have to pay for electricity, et cetera, et cetera. There are very few spaces in that. Area in which we could touch without. Impacting individuals immediately. For us to go any, really any lower. So. Um, I think that's sort of levels to, to. Um, discussion as to where we are right now. What we have proposed.
Well, if we go to status quo, what we've got, what's the in, on number for an, for an increase?
So that is the three point nine million dollars.
So we're gonna.
Yes, and much of that is literally not under our control.
Right.
And I'm just trying to, how much do we have to play with? Uh, without saying what we're really going to be doing is reducing beyond the existing staff in some way. And if we were to turn around and say to the superintendent, you need to save. Uh, a half a million dollars, the other place that she's gonna be able to find half a million dollars is. Probably letting off approximately five people, about a hundred thousand dollars a person. Just playing very rough numbers.
Well, I, I don't like, we say we're gonna lay off some of them when we got.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to pull out what the choices are.
Leaving the budget as it is, is status quo, and it's a three point something.
Mm-hmm.
Percent increase. What does that come down to what an average household is gonna end up paying?
Well, that's, that's the number that, uh, you have a separate slide.
That's the last.
Roughly so another hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So, yeah, yeah.
But you know, for.
Right, yeah.
You know, for visual. And presentation, it would be normally done with a separate slide, just so that it isn't, is, uh. Is, is large block of numbers for people to see, but that, that is the evaluation.
And.
Well, in today's market. The three points, whatever it is, it's an angry is. Seems more than.
No, it's, it's, it's more than a, uh, it's a three point nine million dollars. Uh, is the dollar amount and that is an increase is, uh. Yeah, it's somewhere in here, percentage, uh. Not quick enough to do that. What, what are we talking about in terms of percentage increase over last year? Uh, budget wise, yeah. Should be able to do it all top of my head, but I'm not that flexible anymore. Yeah, we've got the, yeah.
Well, going up three point nine from thirty nine.
So we'll see, that's, that's the number.
Yeah. Well, that's the tax rate, but it's.
But, but you know, for some, you know, looking at that, at that, you know. On a hundred thousand dollars, you know, versus. Negative number or minus number, fifty thousand.
What you're talking about the back page and. Jacob, the editor said that the CLA number is off by twenty-five percent.
We won't be able to hear this.
Right.
You know, but that's, you know, that's why it's hard, you know, to, to run calculations when. You know, that variable, you know, so taking the existing number that he said, which we were given, which was seventy-seven. The, this is what we have. Now, hopefully, on next Wednesday, after they go to that VASBO meeting. It's possible we'll have that updated figure, right?
Yeah, and unfortunately with the CLA, we're not gonna see that until after June.
Right.
When the reappraisal process has officially been completed. They've crunched all the numbers of new brand list and all that stuff.
Why, why are we having a meeting next week?
To continue the discussion because we have to come up with a decision in order to make the town meeting list. You know. Uh, right, so.
We have to come up with our official budget proposal for the towns, for the town to vote on, and there are deadlines that drive that.
In the material that you posted on the website, it was a schedule that showed actual expense in December, I think. Cumbered expense.
First financial report.
Your, your estimate of what the rest of the year is gonna look like.
Yeah.
It's, it's not in this material. Is there a reason about?
Um, I, I was gonna say, uh, I've been working on posting and getting the HSDVT slash budget stuff updated. And getting that out there. So I wanted to kind of use this meeting to say, hey, this is where we're gonna start posting, not only, you know. Supplementals, PowerPoints and presentations and stuff, but this is where we're also gonna start sharing.
The, the reason I asked is you, you said a minute ago that you've got a nine hundred thousand dollar buy down. I presume that means that you're estimating you're coming in under budget by nine hundred? Or have you been carrying a surplus in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars that you're now gonna spend? To keep that, the tax rate down.
So the nine hundred thousand that I'm talking about would be the balance left over from FY twenty-four. So I know while I'm at it, I'll just say, um, you know, the auditors have submitted the thing to the thing, the printers. So we should be getting, you know, the draft and we'll go over that shortly.
Okay, see, so you've got a nine hundred thousand dollar balance carrying forward, surplus carrying forward from. Two years ago.
Yes.
You don't know what, or it's not with here, you don't know what you're estimating right now for a surplus. Or deficit.
If I closed my books at the end of December, I think it was about eighty-eight thousand or something like that.
So not big one way or the other. Okay. So. I guess I was presuming that nine hundred was coming out of this current year that you're in right now.
Hmm, not exactly, because I, I don't know how much we're gonna end up with and.
Yeah.
Projections are projections.
No, I, I.
Check that out, but I'm certainly not gonna risk nine hundred thousand on this year.
I, I guess where I'm going is you're, you presented something which is status quo. So you're. You've got a bunch of unfilled positions that theoretically should yield a surplus in this current fiscal year.
Yes.
Budgeted status quo. So you budgeted all those same vacant positions again for next year. So if you don't fill those positions. You'll have that money coming from the current budget as a surplus, unless you've spread it somewhere else. And you'll have that money as a cushion in this budget that you're presenting for next year. as a cushion in this budget that you're presenting for next year because you're already saying that you aren't going to fill those empty positions.
Right.
So
But.
So when you, somebody who started to talk about layoffs, you you don't necessarily have to have layoffs in order to reduce the budget. You could simply wipe all those vacant positions off the chart of of employees. Change your budget down and it wouldn't impact anything right now. Except you kind of lose track on the fact that you probably want to fill those positions at some point to get back to home.
Right, but my.
Gets me to what Garrett can say, the ideal budget. And I think I think you were talking about the criticism by little last time. I'd rather see you spend some time talking as bored about the wisdom of filling the vacant positions or eliminating them or what kind of benefit plans to provide or something, not necessarily signs out by the road, sorry. But there hasn't been any of that kind of discussion. If I attend town select board meetings, they've had weekly meetings all through the end of November through right now, they're still having. And they've had all art and heads in and they've had presentations on everybody's budget and they've talked about what kind of things they wanna accomplish and who's gonna spend money and what new trucks they need and on and on and on. There hasn't been any of that kind of discussion. That's what puzzles me about about this budgeting process for the school board. That it's all done in the district office and presented to you as a done deal. And your only concern seems to be, what's the effect gonna be on taxes? And I'm certainly concerned with what the effect is on taxes, which we really won't know until the middle of next summer. But I'm also concerned with what kind of education are you, uh, facility are you building to educate our kids? What do we need for buildings? What do we need for technology? You might have bought a hundred new computers last year in last year's budget, but you really need to buy two hundred this year. You're not gonna do it because it's a status quo. So are we spending enough on technology? Are we spending it for the right people? Are we spending the right kinds of money on people? What else in the in the infrastructure side of things uh, needs to be attended to?
Yeah. I mean, again, I'd rather see an ideal budget to start and then work from there. That way we know what does everybody need or does everybody want? You know, needs, of course, supersede wants, but it's nice to know who might want to provide the best education possible. So one question if I may, when I said that we had vacancies, my assumption is those vacancies are not planned to be filled and that we were booking the difference. If we're just leaving those but vacancies in the budget, that's a different thing entirely. So for the clarification for myself and the audience, when we are saying we're not going to be filling existing vacancies, do we mean that we're just gonna leave an unfilled position but still a budget? Or do we remain, Richard, taking that vacancy out of the budget to reduce the overall budget?
I think there's been a combination of both where, you know, there's been certainly some positions that have still been open and it's just, you know, at this point, you really don't need this. We've learned to kind of live without it. And there are still some kind of open positions like I really need somebody in this and we are actively pursuing and trying to find somebody to fill this position. So the positions that, you know, hey, gotta have it, need this.
Right. You need a, you need a first grade teacher because the law says you gotta have a first grade teacher.
Yeah.
Or equivalent requirement. But there are also other positions where, yes, we really want that person. But given the financial situation we're in, we're gonna live with the discomfort of not having that person for a while. And I s- I'm assuming, this is what I'm trying to elicit from you, is that there were positions that you would have liked to fill, but you have made the conscious decision. We will not fill these positions and therefore we have reduced the budget by the cost of that person's salary and the benefits associated with that position. And we have a running score of, this is where we've already cut in tonight. And part of what I was trying to get to is what are those positions? What is the consequences of not filling them? We know what the consequences of not filling a or emptying out an existing position. Or not filling one of the ones you described as, yes, we need to fill this even though it's expensive. Those are directly going to impact. We need to have this conversation. And um so I was hoping for, as I talked about at the last meeting, a narrative associated with what the increase is, what the decrease is, but what the actual impact the district is going to be as a result of that proposed number. So the number has gone up by ten percent. And this is a program that we need for the following reasons, let's explain. If the is gone down and we're saving, we discovered that we didn't really need to do X or Y we could put off something we had planned to do for another year or two. Those are the kinds of of narrative that we have in the past been told. And what I was hoping would come out of this conversation so that we would have some idea beyond, well, it's basically exactly what we were doing last year. There is a place in this conversation for us to say, we really wanted to do X and Y, but we're not doing X or Y. Uh, because those are things that has been suggested, maybe they are necessary, that we would say, no, we understand why you propose that. But we'd like to have that put back in. Those are the kinds of things that ought to be as part of this conversation taking place. When I had said, I'd like a narrative about what is the thinking behind the number you came with for the area. That's what I was hoping for.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I mean, one thing I can say right off the bat is, you know, there was a desire to shift a number of positions that are currently title funded through our consolidated federal grant
Right.
into the local budget because those positions are really crucial. Those include.
Psychological counseling, mental counseling.
Well, it includes many of the positions you heard from tonight.
Yeah.
Some of our instructional coaches and interventionists. And with a budget that is a level fund, we're not going to be able to do that. So we're still going to be really reliant on what we have been expecting to receive through those grants in order to continue to fund those positions. Which is
Yes.
It's really concerning. Um, we're not sure of, as I think we all know, what we're looking at in the future in terms of, you know, title funding. And that is a is a big concern. That was definitely a driver this year in thinking about what could we even incrementally move out of grant funding into the local fund to support much of what you've actually seen throughout the board presentations throughout this this year to date.
And when we have an administration that is entering that is talking about doing away with the Department of Education entirely.
Yeah.
It's understandable why that is a concern. But you haven't raised it that way. So uh that's what I would like to see at the next meeting, some kind of a dialogue. And these meet, these presentations about the coaching, those are very helpful to understand why it might be worth continuing to support that even if we can't do it with federal money that's longer there. But if I don't know that's at risk, I don't know that that's part of the conversation.
Maybe what's the feedback from the principals? Um are they comfortable where we are? Are they really angry cuz they want something they we haven't produced?
I mean, I, you know, I I think if if memory serves me, just based on last year, but you know, historically, if I look at previous years, I think we've been able to do what Garrett is referring to and thinking about in ideal budget. You know, what are the things that you need in order to move some of the district initiatives in our vision and mission work forward? Um, and we 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 didn't even have that conversation um, in light of knowing what was before us in terms of a challenging budget year given last year and what we are anticipating for this year. Um, so I think if there's, you know, consternation coming from our administrative team, it's that we're not thinking about an ideal budget because that's not the reality of the situation this year. The reality of the situation is, can we maintain what we have and do good work with the human and material, you know, resources that we have right now? And so I think, you know, it's been a different approach than it has been in years past when we've had a bit more of the luxury of thinking about what could we do? Right now, it's like, can we maintain?
So we've had conversations over the last period of time about the fact that we have hired people to deal with the emotional and social impacts of our kids going through COVID. And we have made the decision that it is worth the continued investment in those programs. So it's not like we have talked about that in some way or form. But we're not putting it into the context of what it means to the budget and where those are hitting and what we have given up in return. And that is a story that we can talk about, I think.
It's good, yes. But I appreciate what you just shared about your staff, your building, folks. Um asking for what they thought they could get as opposed to asking for what they would like to have. Paraphrasing, but I think that's what I was hearing. I think there's a problem with that. And and that is if if you don't start with an aspirational budget that conceives of everything that you possibly would want, I don't mean to go haywire with it, but if you if you don't paint a picture that says, this is all the things that we'd like to do for the kids in Hartford to give them a first class education. But you mentally say, I don't know he's gonna go for that, so I'm gonna cut a third of that off the top before I even ask for a budget. Then people in the community are never gonna appreciate how much has been theoretically cut from what you'd like to be doing for our kids. They're seeing a budget that's already behind the scenes been cut back to maybe bare bones. And by doing that, you then put yourself at risk that voters are gonna look at that budget and say, I didn't know we were gonna have to start paying for that bond issue. I didn't know benefits were gonna go up six hundred thousand dollars. I wasn't thinking about teacher contracts that lock us into raises for next year that's gonna mean what we're paying teachers is gonna be larger than it was before. You're gonna cut something because I'm not happy with this number and and you're gonna start with a budget that's kind of bare bones and you're gonna be backed into a corner of having to make cuts to that budget that are gonna be really damaging in the long run. So if you don't let people know what you'd really like to have resources and you back all of that off before you've ever even shared with the public what you're up to, I'm not sure that you're not gonna be put in a position of really doing of the people doing damage to the district. Because because of all the frustration they have, not with, not just with this school district, but with the town and the state and federal government and everything that's going on in their lives. They're not gonna be very receptive to spending more money on schools. And you are, you're locked into spending more money with a lot of stuff that's either contractually required or bonded indebtedness, you know? That's where the conversation would have been nice. That to be able to have a conversation and say, you you understand that these dozen people are all funded through grant money or some federal title money potentially go away in the next short while. And we've got to figure out whether the work they do is really valuable enough to sustain it inside our own budget. That conversation should be out in the public that reporters here should be putting that kind of conversation in front of people who read the Valley News. It ought to be on your website somewhere so that so that we really understand what we're giving up by being penny wise and pound foolish. Thanks, I'll try to shut up.
Is it possible to see that ideal budget for next meeting? And like Peter requested a narrative as well as to to why we want, need those things. So I mean, I'd love to start there instead of starting with the status quo budget.
What's moving? The other piece when you made the A C, this at the A C discussion, basically this is a straight conversation discussion. At what level were the aspirational components of the goal for the high school graduate? Because at the end of the day, that's what we're talking about. Because it starts at pre K and it goes all the way through. And how do we get students from pre K through high school? And meet that aspiration, you know, forward the same. Because I I I know you've spoken to us about that concept. We haven't discussed, you know, the cost for that, you know, in form. So we've been looking at, you know, the things that support what's gotten us to where we are. You know, quite, you know, the the coaching on and all of the other um, professional development or, you know, the the district does to enhance, you know, our teachers and putting them in a position to deliver that aspirational. You know, we have gotten that, you know, along along the way. So I guess the question is monetizing, you know, that. But that, you, what what will it cost us? Looking at that in grand scheme so that we can see how either close we are as far as staying in a trap or where we want to be. You know, versus not. You know, versus not. Then have the discussions.
So I have a slightly different request. I don't think there's time to do an aspirational budget. The work that would need to be done to go back. But you clearly have already made choices to bring this budget forward. And part of what you could do during the time is explain what those choices are. And when you have done that and said to us, we really wanted to do the following program. And we just decided not to do it because that program would cost approximately, I don't know, four hundred thousand dollars. And we just didn't think in the current political context and financial context and the economy being where it is. That it made sense to try to even bring that forward. We at least want to know about what your thought process was and why you came up with the choices you did. So that we can in turn take what you've told us and convey that to the public. And we're making the conversation about, please understand what this budget is, but also quite frankly, what it isn't. And why it isn't what it isn't.
Yeah, I mean, I, we have two long budget meetings planned for next week, one of which will be on Tuesday. So I'm not gonna be able to very quickly turn around that information. What I will say is that, you know, many of you have seen. Maybe ad nauseam, the repetition with which we've been putting out the vision of a graduate survey to the community to get input on. You know, what you'd like to see in our graduates and how we can make that happen and use it as a resource to think about allocation. So we now, you know, got all of that information and we have a draft now. And one thing that we were planning to do next week is to use that draft as a way to audit an inventory, what we currently have. And whether or not it is sufficient to reach that. So that conversation was already planning to be had. Um, so I can share the outcome of that, which I think is in essence what you're asking for. Um, and we were, you know, waiting to have something to reference like that in order to have that conversation. Um, and now that we do, we're looking forward to using that as a reference to inventory what we're doing. Up against what the community is hoping to see um, throughout a student's tenure in the district. And be able to get really concrete about whether we're currently meeting that and what we would need in order to meet that.
Step right up. I just wanted to say, I appreciate what you just said, Peter, in terms of. You may not have time to do this, Katie. My perspective, um, I just put out there that. Last year, it's crazy. Budget was a little nuts. The town went right hither and yon around us. I think Katie was brought on about six months ago. I appreciate that we have an interim superintendent keeping us going. Supporting the administration, supporting the teachers and the kids in the building. And honestly, that's, that's all he really came up here to say is that. How much can we expect that she would for years, that some of you have been on the board? You know a lot more about this community and the vision of what we've been doing as a school district than she does in the last six months. I just don't know how all this process all works, but I'm just saying, in all fairness to Katie, how can we expect that she came into what she came into? And what we have asked her to do and then to know and be able to present. A budget with, I'm not saying what you're asking is unfair. I think that makes sense. It makes a lot of sense. And then some of the meetings that I've been to this year. A lot of Katie's efforts that I've seen the district, the administrators have dug into is this vision of a graduate board. So I think that, you know, that little bit of a compromise that. The meetings that we'll have next week and that she'll be able to bring to you all. I think that's a bit of a nice. You know, way to come to the middle based on what.
Thank you. You know, I, I, I think we're, we're all trying to get to the same, you know. Um, and, and there's, there's ways to do it. There's ways you can get there. I think that all things being equal. Let's, let's have that, uh, conversation with the data that's, uh, then, and it's been progressive. You know, because, you know, if you look at. Those that only you're talking about, you know, like e- even the, um. Professional development component, which, you know, I've always felt that that's one of the most important things that we do. You know, as a district is creating, you know, a environment where. You know, our staff is solid, you know, in its ability to bring those kids home. And, and we, we've tried to work really hard on that, you know, over time. Need to do, you know, a study, I think we could very well show how that has been supported. We'll get the algorithms, you know, that's the other piece. You know, looking at that, you know, they shows that our students are successful. That's, that's a very important point of discussion.
To mirror what Mr. Farnsworth said. Katie came in in a very difficult situation. On top of everything else, most of the staff that a superintendent would rely on. Retired or otherwise left and she has been working with people who are new to the job. Does mean that they're not intelligent, capable or anything else. Just means that they don't have the breadth of experience that once existed in the superintendent's office. And you have managed to do an amazing job for vice chairman. Have been. Very pleasantly surprised. Given how pessimistic I was about our situation. About the way you've managed to turn many things around. I distinctly want you to understand that's appreciated. But at the same time, this is not a criticism. We do need to be able to tell the story of what's happening in our district and part of that is the choices we're making. And maybe they're not the perfect choices. I'm almost certain that they're not. But they're the best we can do, given the time we have, the resources we have, the knowledge and experience of our staff. And we're pulling on that and we're utilizing what we have. And I have no complaints.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that maybe being more explicit and overt about the connection between. The presentations that have been very strategically brought to this venue. As well as the information that has been shared throughout the monthly district newsletters to paint a picture and a story. Of what it is we do offer the community in terms of the education that we provide. So that was all intentionally done to tell that story. Not explicitly, I suppose, or overtly, um, connected to this is the narrative of why you. Should be supporting the Hartford School District, but that was the intention behind that, that plan.
You have shown off, quite frankly, some of the things we've been doing well. Which when the story has been largely negative, it's a really nice thing to hear.
I just want to say, I mean, I appreciate all the work that everybody's put into, you know, getting the budgets where it is. Like I know budgeting is not an easy process. In my job, I have to do it every year. I have to adhere to a budget. I mean, I'm at a nonprofit, so I understand it. Uh, I guess I agree, and I know that a week is not a lot of time to essentially go back and create a new budget. I guess my thing is just moving forward. I don't want us to budget in fear. You know, in fear of the tax rate and kind of in fear of what everybody thinks. I mean, I want us to plan for innovation. And, you know, aspirations and dreams, like, what, what do we want to be the best district around?
Well, that, that's what was said by another taxpayer, well, two taxpayers last week. Or the last meeting was essentially the same thing, you know? What would that look like?
You know, and I mean, it, it, and it may have to get whittled down from there, but it's nice to know. Where we want to start instead of starting from the middle, so, you know, so that's just where I was coming from. But I do appreciate you guys know all the hard work that you put in.
Come up to people from the audio.
I'll give you good news when I can. While we've been talking, I was just online with Drew Truchel, class of two thousand and ten. Who was instrumental in putting the sign out front. He told me who bought it, how much it was, who put the condom in, and he did it himself, but condom in with Mark Smith and, um. Um, another match, by the way. So anyway, I have all those answers, I think, already, so I'll share that with her and an email, so. You're already have the game.
So Drew, thank you. Because I remember that day, the last day instruction. Um, let's see, that brings us to. Public comment. But we, we've had some work.
I, I think we've. Public comments in our. No one virtually has their hand raised right now or something, so.
I have an announcement.
Yes.
Macy Betway, Wiser, uh, received enough votes to get in the top three. We talked about this at the last meeting, uh, and she'll be going to New York City sometime in January.
I think, it'll be streamlined. There's a live performance, the prefinalists do their thing, so there will be a site that we can all watch her if we'd like.
Thanks. And there's a potentially a possibility that one of the Hartford Girls Basketball Players is. Uh, has scored her one thousandth point tonight during the basketball game and she's a junior Charlotte Jasmine. So.
First in history of the Hartford School District.
Of, of girls, yes, yes. Um, so the game started at seven, so she may have already scored the ten points or the eight points that she's.
Yeah, seven points.
Seven points she needs, okay.
So Heidi Dudo sent a email to the board requesting that. The agenda and timing and so forth, these meetings be posted to the listserv. I don't know if we've been doing that. My wife said she didn't see it. Uh, I would like to concur and say that we really ought to return to our former practice of making sure it gets into the listserv.
Yeah, yeah.
And one other announcement, uh. Uh, it may be a pleasure to some. I'm hoping some will, uh, at least take it with. The grain of less pleasure and maybe even some sadness, but. I've decided not to run for the seat in the coming election. So if somebody would like to step up, uh, and run. There is a position that you could fill. It has been an honor and at times even a pleasure to serve on this board. But all things must eventually come to an end and, uh. There's enough other things going on in my life and I've done it for a while now. And I'll still be available to you now, so, but I think I'm gonna step down. I'm not quite sure. I, I'm very bad at counting these things. Um, I started when my daughter was in first grade. Uh, and stepped up when one of the people who was on the board had been forced to retire, retire from the board because they were moving away. And, uh, then served, uh, basically a quarter of a term or so and then ran again. So it's been, uh, eleven years or so, twelve years? A little longer.
Well, thank you for your service.
Zach Scott, Hartford. Just wanted to revisit, um. Some thoughts that I had shared earlier in the year and hadn't heard any more discussion on it, but. I really think that we do a good job of involving parents and community members and more hiring administrators. But I don't think enough feedback is sought when, you know, you can come across for administrators. I think that there's, there's a need for that. I would encourage the, the board to look into that practice. Actively seeking out feedback from parents who. Aren't apt to. Go out of their way to send feedback, but are solicited for feedback and like they provide. The snapshot of some things change.
And he knows. Heidi has her hand raised. It's gonna come out of this laptop.
Can you, can you hear us, Heidi?
Is the audio supposed to come out of the meeting hall?
But also it would come out of here.
I was trying to listen down there.
If anyone else has a laptop, could speaker, just turn on the speaker and not the microphone.
Is she trying to talk?
Heidi, go ahead and unmute if you can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Um. Heidi Dudo at River Junction, Vermont. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Um. I really appreciate that you took my email and are willing to work on listing the meetings more publicly. For transparency and communicational skills with the residents of Hartford. Um, I struggled to actually even find the link to this meeting tonight. I had to go back to last fall's meeting to find the link. Um, I don't know if you can make it a bit more visible even on the website. So that more people be, can be involved and, um, be heard. Um, the other item that I would like to address is I have been requesting, um, the school budget be emailed to me. Along with the school board stipend payments out for the year. And I've been asking for that for months with no answers. And I've been asking for that for months with no answers. How do I get that information? Hello?
The stipend payments. And and the budget budget summary was on December ninth.
December eleventh?
December eleventh, Coach sent. The board stipends and then December ninth. Sent the budget summary.
Me?
Yes, I do. Uh, to you.
Uh, can that be reset? Because I do not have it.
Couldn't hear what she said.
She wants to resend.
Okay.
I did not receive it.
Just forward that.
Yeah, um, Heidi, I'll forward it to you right now.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
It'll be two emails.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Heidi.
No, no problem. I just, I would like to be able to vis visually see. What you talk about, not just hear about it. Um. I've been doing this with the town for years now and it just, it helps me to better understand. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other hands raised at this time.
Anybody else?
No.
So we'll go into the consent agenda. Appointments, resignations, retirements.
None at this time.
Uh, we have one set of meeting minutes, all eleven twenty twenty-four.
The edits, changes, corrections. That's. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
People for the discussion, all in favor?
I oppose.
So moved. Hey, our next our next meeting will be next Wednesday. Um, we'll address, we'll be addressing primarily uh budget. And. Meeting evaluations.
Run right inside the first page.
And I just look at the bathroom for chronological order.
Coach always said.
All right, so board was prepared for meeting satisfactory. Board's time was spent on ends, not means satisfactory. Each board member was given the opportunity to participate satisfactory. Or treated all persons with courtesy and fairness satisfactory. Board adhered to Robert's rules for order satisfactory. Board adhered to its adopted governance style. Right through.
In that, just say it's read what they are.
Uh, it emphasized our vision. It encouraged diversity of viewpoints. It exercised strategic leadership, not administrative detail. Maintain distinction between board and staff roles. It used collective decision-making, have a look to the future. Very satisfactory.
That I've moved if we adjourn.
All in favor?
I.
Post.